You watch over this board and help us make the decisions for the betterment of Owen County and the Owen County government. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you for being here. Going to start with approval of minutes. Everybody's had a chance to go over those. Got quite a bit of paper here, so I'll do my best to keep organized. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for June 5th, 2023?
I make a motion to approve the June the 5th, 2023 minutes.
I've got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As soon as I find him in this pile. Too many.
I didn't put that crap.
That's me. No, you start me out organized and then I add to the confusion. All right, moving on to claims and payroll. We have payroll at $285,378.04. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve payroll at $285,378.04.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Whoops, sorry Bob. Regular claims in amount of $519.152.20. And if I'm not mistaken, there's a big chunk of ARPA or matching grant fund for community crossings, three hundred and some thousand is the part of that. So that's why the...
And insurance is some.
And some of that's coming out of the... Out of cycle. So, regular claims of $519,152.20. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve regular claims.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
We also have a claim here for $19,980 to Lowell Sales for the generator. I'll make a motion that we approve. Do I hear a second?
Okay.
Motion by myself, second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you. And then out of cycle claims, and gentlemen, we'll hold these till after the meeting. A total of $157.79.20. We have Toshiba, COVID immunization, Visa cards one through five, utilities, PEL roofing, Epic Insurance, and HiCom for a total of $157.079.20. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve out of cycle claim for $157.79.20.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Bob, second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
Monthly financial, Sheila, you want to give us a quick update?
Just provided you copies of your monthly report, your settlement and stuff that I went through the last time. We also had the cumulative doc summary. Again, this is going to be your best friend when you're doing your budgets in the next couple of weeks. There is a commissioner's budget that people that the few that different departments have to report to, not all of them. Jim usually sent that around. I'll dig it out and see what it is because you guys will have to have that before the next council meeting. So I'll bring it to your July meeting.
Are you sending out that cumulative report to the department heads?
Not to the departments, but I can.
I think it's a good idea so they can keep track of what they've spent so far, match up their numbers and just, you know.
Yeah, okay.
I know it's a huge help to me because I can look at what department's spending what on what, so, or how much on what, excuse me. Maybe gentlemen loved that report we're talking about.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea that we send that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, it helps them as well work on their budget proposal because it tells them how much they're spending on maintenance or upkeep or whatever. So, yeah, Kathleen.
Just a really fast comment. We're capable of running our own reports and I know auditor's office is busy enough for them to be sending one more report to everybody.
And if you can, that's fine. That's fine. I just want to make sure that people have access to it and you can get that, so.
I'll send an email down to all the department heads.
For a reminder.
And that's good. And thank you, Kathleen, for making that.
Absolutely don't want to create anybody anymore.
Actually, our software too also.
Does it? Okay.
Tells us, so we have.
What's up with Sheila started this year and it's been huge in my book, so.
We actually checked ours through Sheila, so we know we're good.
Okay. No old business, new business. Insurance presentation has been moved to next month on the 19th. Rodney Clark, don't see him. Ryan, since you're here, I'm going to bring this up. He's called, I guess, a couple of times about an out of control animal up in that area. You guys have been up there. Obviously, we don't have animal control in the county, so it falls off on the responsibility. I even had Dana, because this gentleman's called me a couple of times and we've emailed back and forth, and the state has a IC code to deal with these type of things at the county level, and I'm sure you have done whatever it is you can do.
The dog owner's been written twice, the last I checked, which was last week, early last week as I spoke to Mr. Rodney on the phone, and I guess he got bit this week.
That I have not heard, so maybe that's why he's not here.
He admitted Monday. He got bit by that dog. We have briefed the homeowners twice, both husband and wife. You know, and the problem is, what do we do with it? Do I put a mean dog in my front seat of my car and drive it somewhere? But I have no ability to deal with that. To be honest with you, I told him if you're in danger or someone else is in danger of that dog, you can terminate the dog. It's not what I want to see happen. Obviously, I've read that the dog, you know, stay with its owners and be taken care of the way it's supposed to be taken care of and kept. And, you know, he's a grown man. What if it was a six-year-old little kid? Something's going to be done now. And I don't know what we do, physically do with it.
Sheriff, can we lean on any, do the surrounding counties have any animal control that we could ask a favor from, or is that crossing the line?
I don't know. And then my question to you, who pays for it?
The homeowner.
Yep. That would be what I would say.
And again, if you're, if you've already worked with them twice and you're not getting any response, the ability of them to take care of it any further, so. I'd have to say you probably handle that in the best way that you can.
We wrote that twice in less than two months, or less than one month. We wrote them in May, in the middle of May, and then the second of June, I believe it was, if my memory serves me correctly, we wrote them again. Something's going to happen with that dog, and maybe we can reach out to a neighboring county if they have it. I don't know if they do or not.
Yeah, and I'm unaware of that either, Joel. But that's a great idea.
I mean, it's, we would hate to start making that habit.
I'll make some contact.
Because it incurs cost.
County commissioners and see if we can get something done. It's obviously closer to Putnam County. If we can get help up there, maybe Morgan County, so.
And I can't put, I can't put a dog in the, a mean dog, in the cab of the vehicle with one of my guys trying to drive and fight off the dog at the same time. It's just not practical.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing. And again, I feel for this gentleman. This is, last year, we had a gentleman get bit in the back out here off of County Line Road. Nothing was ever done. It's a shame. Okay. Bill, you walked in at a perfect time. I'm going to let Sheila deal with you.
State Board of Accounts says that the county would have to be the applicant for the funds in order for it to go through the county fund system.
So what I'm going to be?
Not going to be able to. And I just got those emails back from them. We had a couple into them and we just...
Foundation said we could go through.
It can't be a pass-through fund. I mean, it's not the county. Again, they explained it as the county wasn't the applicant. Therefore, just to put money into a fund and put it on through, there's, there's not a trail for the, the actual funds processing. And that came from State Board of Accounts.
Bill, could you check with the community foundation over here and see if they have something that they could process?
That's what they told us. They're giving us the money.
Okay, they are giving you the money. Gotcha.
And they said go to your county government and they can do it through them, so that's what we did.
Well, obviously, the state's telling us we can't, so we're going to have to find another avenue.
I'll check. I'll call. But again, because the county wasn't the applicant, just to put it in a pass-through fund, it's not. It's because it came from them and you guys would be the ones having to report. And if it goes through one of our funds as an applicant, we'd be the ones having to report.
I want to bounce back to the dog bite situation here real quick. Attorney's got some information on liability of that situation, so.
Civilly, in Indiana Code 15-20-1-3, the owner of the dog who bites a person who is, and that person was acting reasonably and was in a location that they were, should have been in, not on the other person's property, then the owner is liable for all damages suffered by that person. But there's also a criminal offense in 15-20-1-4. Except as pride in subsection B, the owner of the dog commits a Class C misdemeanor if one, the owner recklessly knowingly or intentionally fails to take reasonable steps to restrain the dog; two, the dog enters property other than the property of the dog's owner; and three, as a result of the owner's failure to restrain the dog, the dog bites or attacks another person without provocation, resulting in bodily injury to the other person. The offense is a Class B misdemeanor if the person has been convicted of one previous unrelated violation of the section, and a Class A misdemeanor if the person has been convicted more than once and the results, or the violation results in serious bodily injury to the person. It's a Level 6 felony if the owner recklessly violates this section and violation results in the death of a person, which we didn't have that, and Level 5 felony, again, related to resulting in a death. So there is criminal code for dog bites liability.
There is criminal code. Those are both misdemeanors you mentioned, other than resulted in a death. A misdemeanor must be observed by a law enforcement officer to be enforced. If it was a felony level, that, that's a different, that's a different beast. It does not have to be observed. The misdemeanors must be observed in the presence of law enforcement. Unless there's an exception in that IC code. But you didn't read that, so I don't hear the exception. So unfortunately, we can't charge them with criminal offense unless we watch it happen.
That's unfortunate. Laws are law, yeah.
Laws are law, and in some cases, specifically with misdemeanors, the public are the ones that become the victim all the time. It's over because we can't do anything about it.
Right. Okay, well, at least we've got the IC code mentioned in that way. If Mr. Clark wants any more information, we can follow up on it. Okay, Hamilton Center. Good morning.
Good morning. Actually, here for Drug Free You and Me, Council. I believe you've got a copy of the letter from the ICJI. We submitted the CCP, Copy Comprehensibility Plan on April 1, and this is the letter stating that we are approved to use the funds. Below, you see there's three categories or four categories, but three for disbursement for the CCP: Prevention, Education, Treatment Intervention, Criminal Justice, each $9,000. Administrative is $23.79, and that's to cover meeting costs or any other supplies we may need. So I'm asking for permission, we're accepting applications, asking for permission to review and disperse funds as reviewed by the Drug Free You and Me Council.
Have any questions, gentlemen?
I do not.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Joel to approve the Hamilton Center grant. Do I hear a second?
It's Drug Free You and Me grant.
Drug Free You and Me, I'm sorry.
Drug Free You.
So I have a, excuse me, a motion by Joel, a second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christina.
Christine.
Excuse me. How are you this morning?
How are you doing?
Ryan. Talked to you a little bit about this yesterday, and we've got some information here in front of us, so I think we're, I think we're good. I'll go ahead and let you speak, and then we can add our two cents to the table.
Are we talking about?
Talking about the health funding.
Oh, okay.
That's what I had here in front of me first, if that's okay.
Yep, that's fine. So.
Probably the bigger discussion, isn't it? It's probably the bigger discussion.
It is the bigger discussion, the more important one. So, Core Services for Public Health, the state found out that we were 49th in the nation for public health, that they don't put much into us. So they wanted to do something to ramp that up so that we could do more for our taxpayers and our community. And so they went through legislature and they, I think the first year it's $75 million, the second year's $250 some million dollars to split up between all the counties that opt in. It's a five-year program. You opt in for five years. You can opt out, say, year two, you don't like where it's going. You can say, hey, I'm done. I want my legacy back. So. There are key performances that we have to do and we have to, it is, there's things that we already do in the Health Department that are required. Some of these things are put on a back burner, just like our complaints, because we don't have the manpower or what we need to do to, you know, enforce those things. There's no infrastructure within our system. So some of this money can be used for that. It can be used for an actual clinic in the Health Department. We could, you know, hire a nurse practitioner, a doctor. We could have our own clinic, whatever we want to do. So I just think it's a good opportunity for the Health Department, for the county, so.
And I agree. And, you know, I've talked about this. I know Joel and I've talked a little bit. We've been working diligently with the Sheriff Department, your department, the Building Department, to try to get some type of code enforcement underway. Sheriff's Department is strapped with lack of employees, but they're making it happen the best that we can. We've tried to do a one day a week to go out. I think we're still doing that on a Thursday is the plan. But with this, and you're unable to fund a full-time person or even a part-time person that we could go out two or three days a week, would be huge for this county.
I agree. How hard.
To clean up our junkyards, our landfills that are, that are on every street and road in this county.
We're awful good at finding the problems, and we have. A lot of them have come to surface. The follow-up's the problem. We don't have the resources for the follow-up on a lot of this stuff. And that's, that's what gets frustrating for the people of the county as, they do it all right, but in the end, it's not, it doesn't, our follow-through is terrible. So I, I think that this is a wonderful idea and great use of resources. And I agree with Commissioner Burton that maybe this could lead to an individual that can monitor this stuff, and we can, we can follow through as we, as we're supposed to.
And also to follow along with the dog bite, every dog bite that is, I guess, someone who's went to the doctor or the hospital comes through our office, the nurse has to investigate it. We can give it to that person and they can do the investigation. That would take one thing off our nurse, you know, so.
It would help on the law enforcement side as well. Absolutely.
This, this individual has been bitten, could have reported to the Health Department and records and appropriate healthcare could have been provided. We don't know that this individual that's bitten has even pursued healthcare, and that's kind of a bad deal, or how severe the bite was. We need to know that for everybody's business. I mean, it's, it's hard to follow a situation up if we don't even know how severely this individual was bitten. So that's, that's important to, to find out.
The other thing that I understand about this program is there's a matching amount from the county.
Not a match, it's a 20%.
20%, a matching amount. I was getting that. It's okay. So we take our current amount that's funded to the Health Department by three and break that, divide that by three, and that's a percentage that goes through. And what that happens, ends up happening is it puts about $70,000 to $75,000 back into general fund with this program. So the county actually is gaining revenue. At the same time, we're gaining more money in the Health Department, if that makes any sense. So that, that additional money can go to other programs for whatever the county might need. So I don't know about anybody else, but I think we got the opportunity today to go ahead and say, let's move forward with this. We can't opt out in September if we change our minds. Is that correct?
Correct.
I don't see that happen, but I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we, we approve this local health funding for '24 and '25. It just sounds...
Our second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a document that we sign here, Sheila, or just a check mark on your?
It says to upload the minutes from the meeting that just shows that you opt in.
Okay.
Your motion will be that you opt in.
Okay, and then I have my two grants. Both go with the PHGP, the Public Health Emergency Preparedness. We'll do that one first. That was a five-year grant. This will be year five. So and then, so this will be the last year of that grant. It's $25,000. And basically, we just support EMA or any other public health emergency that would happen out in county. So that's what that's for.
That was my next question, what we're using that for. So thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the Public Health Emergency Preparedness grant?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the second one is the School Liaison Grant. That's where the CCMA's work directly with the school corporation nurses to make sure that the school has everything that they need health, healthcare-wise. If they know the child that needs to go to the dentist, to the doctor, to the eye doctor, to the, you know, hearing, whatever, they work with them. We help them get the resources. If they don't even have money, we can help pay for it if the parents can't afford it. That's $110,000. This grant, I think, will probably end after this year. I think it's going to be merged into the new that we just talked about. So, but because nothing starts until 2024, they went ahead and extended the grant that we're in, gave us another $110,000 to start the school year.
Sure. How does our schools fare when it comes to nurses in the facilities? I know that's been a huge, huge problem for a lot of school corporations to maintain a, a nurse, you know, make sure a kid's got a Band-Aid when he scrapes his knee and, you know, maybe a little mental health problem or whatever.
Right.
For curiosity, are our schools able to maintain nurses in our facilities?
Corporation nurses, they stick around. The nurses that just, you know, hand me in the first aid stations, they seem to have a little bit of a turnover there. I think that it's lack of training. I think they just need better resources.
So, so that grant can help with some of this stuff.
And that's what, exactly what it's supposed to do.
Do they have one in each school?
Well, they are shorthanded. So we were talking about trying to help them get one out of the McCormick Street because they, they don't have one out there. I guess the secretary takes care of all the first aid, so.
Yeah, not her forte. Do I hear a motion to approve? And what was the name of that grant again? I'm sorry.
School liaison.
School liaison, yes. I'm sorry.
$110,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I made a motion to approve it.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this will help the county in a lot of different ways. Highway.
Morning, Joel.
Morning, Greg.
Commissioners, I'd like to start off with a report on Patrick'sburg Road on account. As you know, our counters were stolen and or vandalized, but we did have one counter that was not red daily that we sat down for an entire count that was not. We got the entire count from Ju, from May 12th to June 9th, traveling on Patrick'sburg Road during the closure. And that was actually placed on the Monday after the closure on Friday. It was 213,355 cars.
It's unbelievable. Unbelievable.
Wow.
Sheriff White, if you'd run enough tickets, you could pay for a jail. If you'd had the manpower.
That's what I was going to ask for.
Yeah, that is absolutely, when Greg told me that a couple of weeks ago or last week, I was blown away. Wow.
Now, my understanding is, Gary, that you've met with or we have made attempts to get with the state and, and talk about some reimbursement or some kind of help on this.
We have.
Do we know where that's going?
Well, I'm going to get Dana involved, and he's going to have to get out there with Greg. We have access to $31,000 in the state's, whatever that proposal was that they had for route or detours. They had already put something together. We could collect no more than $31,000. We had that conversation. I want to get that ball rolling and get that money back to you as soon as possible. Dana's aware of what I'm talking about here. Then they also told Greg, they went out and looked at Old Patrick'sburg Road. They were going to send you a project engineer or consultant.
Actually, on Old Patrick'sburg Road and Fresh Griff Road, they're going to send me a project engineer out. What they told me was that they could see that the berms had been destroyed, but they felt like the rest of the roadway was okay. And that, in her opinion, did not warrant a resurface. I disagree in regard to that. Of course, with that many cars on that road, Patrick'sburg Road, I think we could, we've got some teeth in something we could work with. But I don't see how to fix the berms on that road without resurface on that road. The same way with Fish Drift, we are working with our insurance We are working with our insurance company in regard to the bridge that was damaged on Lennox Road. And I believe that there is a replacement with a box culvert. We have had it sized and we are getting the information so we get that fast on to our, our insurance carrier to deal with the trucking company's insurance.
And that structure was safe and sound until this event happened and this is what's caused that. There was not a warning from United Consulting saying, hey, you're gonna have to replace that bridge.
No.
Okay.
It passed our inspection.
Okay, it already passed inspection. So.
That, that bridge sustained two damage events, did it not?
It did. There are accident reports too, both.
So I'm gonna recommend that county attorney work with Greg and NDOT. Moving forward, we want our thirty one thousand. And that money basically covers dust control that we've put out there, lost signage, the, the road counters, any additional gravel that we had to deal with, time and labor to collect that thirty one thousand that they're telling us that we have access to get up to that amount. And then work with Greg and NDOT to come up with a solution on these road repairs. Greg and I talked about this a little bit. A berm on a county road versus a berm on a highway is two totally different things. You've got, you know, a foot of a depth and based on a county highway, you can go out and cut two, two feet of the side of the road off and repave it. You're not gonna do that on a county road because you got mud three inches below the surface. So we're better off to roll the thing out, put a two inch layer over the top of it and be done. I think Greg and I agree on that. And I think that that's the direction we need to go.
Also, in regard to this closure, in fact, Mr. Mark sent me an email in regard to this with a question. I didn't have an answer for him as to why. So I did a little research. I have in the county four roads that have load limits on them. It's not regard any bridges. Their old ordinancees date way back. One of them is on Smithville Road. And it is eight ton limit. And that, I do know why that one was placed there. That was placed there because of the coal mines. The coal mines have been gone a long time, but it is remade. Fish Creek Road, I cannot tell you why that was created. I think personally needs to stay because that keeps heavy truck traffic off the road the best we can. But the bridges do not require that load limit to be there. Qnot Cataract Road and Sand Hill Road. They date way back. Commissioners, it is at your pleasure whether those stay or go, but they're there. And no bridges involved. And again, Smithville was the only one I could determine as to why. I have a thought process as to Qnot Cataract and Sand Hill. But I don't know whether I'm correct. I just believe that that may be in regard to D and R properties maybe. Because that is the only common denominator. But there's nothing that says that has to be there because of that. So I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I've been out on Qnot, Qnot Cataract Road with D and R. County owns about thirty three acres up in that area. There was some logging going on, so they were concerned if they were on our property. So you're right, Greg, that probably makes sense for, for D and R to be involved in some of that.
But, but I can't say that.
But it makes sense. So let me ask you this and fellow commissioners, please jump in. Is this something that you need to sit down with the county attorney and evaluate? We're in the process of putting a speed limit countywide on all of our county roads. We discussed that in our last meeting. I think that's very important because we have, and again, going through the ordinance book, we'll be lucky if there's twenty roads that have actual speed limit ordinances to them. We, we just need to do a blanket ordinance for all county roads. And we, we need to do that with the help of the sheriff and yourselves and the attorney.
And I hadn't had a chance to speak with the sheriff about this because they would be the ones that would have to enforce. And they did enforce and have been. We even received a call today in regard to a bridge in a truck. Which is a situation with the Aqua Company that is traveling Rocky Hill Road. The plan commission gave them a specific route and they are following that route. I know Commissioner Burton is aware. I have never agreed with that route. I think it is a poor route, but there's not a really good route in and out of there before that was approved. But I don't, that was before my time. Because they, they caused many concrete structures. I do believe and did state that I believe that they were the reason that the bridge had to be replaced on Rocky Hill Road. But as you know, I was told there was nothing that I could do about it because that route had been given.
Yeah, I think it did.
So I don't know if that's something Dana needs to look into.
We can possibly revisit that. That was done during the Donnie Mini era. They, they helped create that route. I know that when that bridge was out, we routed them back into town to forty six. It probably cost them a little bit of time. But if I'm not mistaken, there's no structures that they would cross over on that route.
Well, actually commissioners, there is really no good way for them to get in and out of there. They cross a concrete structure on Keeler Road. If they go out to Rattlesnake or Rocky Hill, they fall under weight restriction.
And they can't get out Coon Path.
They can't get out Coon Path because of the danger. It is probably the best solution. But it is a tough one on the county. I believe when routes are designed for these type of things, the highway department, sheriff's office needs to be a little more involved so we can discuss what has to happen before this kind of traffic is approved and a route given.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I don't know that that was done again. You and I weren't here when that happened. So, but I think probably need to sit down with the highway department and determine what roads need to have weight limits on it. And get with the attorney. He'd come out and you guys can come up with a determination if you think that that's the, the best avenue to go.
Yeah, now we still have the tool in, in climate weather that I, as highway superintendent, can place the weight limit on the roadway. But once I place that weight limit, it's on that roadway for ninety days. No matter if it just needs to be there for two or three, it's there for ninety days.
And we've done that before.
Yes, we have exempt from that. And I want to be clear, our agricultural, which includes the logging industry.
And that's our biggest industry.
Yes.
So there again, we still need to work on those bonding issues on those roads for those type of situations. And I know you have been.
And back on the speed limit, there has to be traffic studies to go against the, what the state has. We need to sit down and talk about that and see what we can.
In general, what I have done in the past and it is taken, it's gonna take a while to get one countywide is in order to do that, I've had to place traffic counters on each road, get a traffic count for a period of time. And actually, personally, I mean, physically, we've sit there and for X amount of hours at different times and watched the type of traffic on the road before it was reported.
So countywide may be difficult. We may have to take it, a road at a time or an area at a time, be able to do that study.
Might be the best way to do that. And I would suggest maybe township at a time.
There you go. Good idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
Now that might, one road may run into the other township so we couldn't lead over. But that's probably the best way to do it, pick a central township and go from there.
And you're working on certified mileage by township now, so.
Yes.
Makes sense.
But that's my solution to that is how to do that. And we could get that done. It may take us up to a year to get it done totally and have the information that you need correctly to write the ordinances for the entire county.
It's a lot of miles.
Yeah.
Then we can, we can do it township at a time. I mean, we could approve a particular township once that township's done. So we could start implementing these as we go along.
Okay, very good.
You guys work on that and any help you need from the sheriff and Bob on this as well.
We have ordered road counters. My staff has designed and we're actually going to enter it in the contest that they have in regard to highway departments engineering their own equipment. We, we have engineered, my shop has a safety device to place the road counters in and to attach them to where they can't be stolen.
Outstanding. And for those that don't know what Greg's talking about, LTAC puts on a contest with all ninety two counties from the highway department that comes up with different engineering or tools or methods to improve their highway department or the safety of the county. They've done this for many, many years. So we're glad to see you guys participating in that. I know when we go to the commissioners conference every year, they always mention, you know, what counties have done this. And matter of fact, I've even brought you a couple of ideas with some of that stuff. So good deal. Hope it works out.
Next commissioners, this is just information. We have been denied asphalt this week and part of last week from both plug mill belonging to E and B in Bloomington and the plug mill belonging to Milestone in Cloverdale for our hot boxes. We only get three tons at a time. Now we're buying fifteen to twenty tons a day, but it's three tons at a time. And as much asphalt that is being laid, we have become a hindrance in regard to that. So the hot box hasn't been running and that is the reason why. It is available at the Milestone Little Cincinnati plant in Green County. But gentlemen, that is a long haul for three ton of asphalt at a time. So it is just not feasible for us to do. We check every morning and so that crew is now cutting brush, weeding around guardrails, cleaning bridges, et cetera. But they are not putting asphalt in the potholes from the hot boxes because of that. Now that being said, the injection hole patchers are still running.
But I appreciate you doing what you're doing.
And I, I will inform you in the public meeting that we had an issue with a hot, with a injection hole patcher. And, and employee, we had a retraining with that individual. And things have improved, so we think we have solved that problem. But there was about a three day process where there was some issue. I want to touch base just a little bit. Everybody seems a little excited in our world about the one cent gas tax that's been imposed on the citizens that buy or anybody that buys fuel in the state of Indiana, the gas tax. Would invite everybody to look at the NDOT matrix. And gentlemen, we're not gonna get a whole lot of anything. The lion's share of that tax hike is going to end up.
Yeah, and I asked Sheila this morning to get the results on our end between the, it's a small percentage. You're right. And also excise taxes going up as well. But hey, if it's forty thousand dollars, it's forty thousand.
Well, we'll take anything we can get.
Absolutely.
You know.
Yeah, it's not dramatic.
After looking at the matrix, there's a hike, but it's not going to affect us.
Not like in eighteen when it was ten cents.
Then commissioners, I want to report that Little Flock Road will be open by end of business day tomorrow. I am going to leave it closed all day tomorrow. Although the citizens might see it appear done because we're gonna lay dust control. And I want it to cure before we put traffic on it.
And I assume you're not gonna pave it for quite some time.
It needs to settle and let it, let some compaction go. So it will appear it's open. When people look, there will be just barricades, but that's what we're doing.
And Sheriff, that'll give you an avenue south of the county once they close that forty three bridge in July. So hopefully that'll eliminate your problem because I know we talked about how are we gonna deal with that route? So thank the highway department for getting that done before that forty three bridge is shut down.
And then the Patrick'sburg Road drainage project, I'd look for it to be done this afternoon or by end of day. But, you know, things occur. The contractor hit a fiber line yesterday which slowed things down. So we may be delayed because of that. But it will be open by week's end.
Excellent.
The road graders have been firming roads heavy and prep for community crossing work and some of the milling work, coal mix work that we're going to do. They will complete Johnson Road this week. And then you'll see graders back out on their routes. Just so you know, the gravel's up here that they've been neglected, but we had to have the graders to prep these roads. So they will be back and working in your districts next week. Okay, commissioners, I don't know how you want to proceed with this, but we need to read in the minutes our road inventory. We're doing the road inventory township by township. It takes a while because after the roads are done, then I have to go through each and every one of them. And make sure that NDOT standards are met on the road itself. So I need to read this in. It requires for NDOT, all three of your signatures. I don't have to have a back sign today, but I need to read this in to you. So they, but there's a lot of these. So if we have time, I would like to get this done today. If not, I could do it at the next meeting.
You're, we're within an hour of the meeting still, forty five minutes. And we just got department heads after this, so.
Okay. Then I'll start Franklin Township, Main Street, added a tenth of a mile. Franklin Township, South Six Seventy Five West, which is off of Goose Creek Road. County road named Sassa Brass plus a tenth. Let's see, Methodist Church Road, point zero six added. Franklin Township, certified Goose Creek Road. And so we're recertifying every road. Point zero three. Franklin Township, Big Four Road plus a tenth. Franklin Township, Lucas Road, plus zero six. Raise us the Bay Singer Road plus five, zero five. Gloryville Road, no change. Gloryville Road, and this will be in the section that goes down to US two thirty one at the tenth. Byless Road will deduct a tenth. New Hope Road plus a tenth. Franklin Street in Freedom would be minus a tenth. The explanation on that commissioner certified is an area I don't, no one was ever a road. It's guard railed off by the state and guard railed off by us. So just not there. Guard railed off by us. So just not there. Gentry Road. Plus zero six. No change in Strauss Road. No change in Freedom Road. No change in Freedom Road to the Leach Cemetery, the dead end. No change in Jones Road. No Jones. Landville, excuse me. Miller Road, no change. No change in Parish Road. Four Tens Dunn Road plus Hick Cemetery. Point four nine plus. April Road, point two plus. Uh Farmer's Road. A subtraction of point zero two. White Springs Road, same minus point zero two. Morley Road plus a tenth. South five fifty West is Whitsky, which is a dead end off of Goose Creek. Bears no name. We added uh four point one tenths of a mile. Rocky Top Road from White Springs. Will deduct point zero one. Straight Line Road add point four three. There is no change in uh Prior Cemetery Road. No change in Thompson Road. And no change in Hickam Road.
Thank you. And commissioners, those are all going to be certified for additional revenue per county?
Uh and gentlemen, there are miles added. I you know, truth of the matter, we're truthful, yes, and we did lose some mileage. But we are still adding mileage as we discover what we're doing.
You have several townships to go get.
Uh this is we've only done two townships. And this is a successful project. These all need signed by all three of you. If I could leave one with you and I can get them back later, I'd just however you would like.
We can just put them up here with the out-of-cycle claims and more. We have a ordinance for your department, I believe, today that we've been waiting on for a while. I think Dana has it prepared.
Well, um. Are you speaking about the horse drawn?
Yes.
Okay, that had some questions still on.
Okay.
It's six pages long. There were some fines, what we wanted to do for fines, um where the money would go from the fines. Um so um I sent that out, but I hadn't got feedback yet on that, but it's extremely close. We just need a few.
And Dana didn't send that to us. I'm sorry, I wasn't gonna bring that up in the meeting. It's um we've checked into where to get license plates for horse drawn vehicles. Uh we've checked into the size and what uh other communities use as standard for horse drawn vehicles. So I we now have that information. I I think the only thing that needs to be determined is who issues the license plate and where if there are any fines, where that goes.
I think that we determined that that was going to be through your department.
Okay.
I think the licensing would be through your department and therefore um the fees, at least the way I've proposed it, would go into your funds. Um and then, you you know, any penalties for not having it licensed and and such, anything related to licensing will go through you. Anything related to other violations um would be of course using the sheriff department. And that's one of the things I was asking what uh what funds that those need to go in. That would be a shared uh shared thing with the sheriff's department.
Gentlemen, I really believe once these are in place, there won't be mu- many violations. I think it just needs to be the rule.
I've I'm I'm also thinking that uh from my neck of the woods to your garage is quite a distance. Uh with when we when we get this imposed, I think it would be wise if we go to uh each district. If you will have a common area and allow these folks to come in in a day's time and do a remote register to get everybody up. Because, you know, honestly, they don't always have drivers and they don't always have the time to get to town. So we get this so long further, I think we should go to each district and say, you know, we're gonna centrally locate this day and the highway department could come get these folks all set up and registered.
I know that this came to light because of the heavy horse um drawn vehicle traffic because of our new and viable Amish community. But uh gentlemen, there's a lot more people have horse drawn vehicles on our roadways, including and and I will tell you, including myself. So I'll be the first in line to buy a license plate and do what I need to do to make it happen.
Do you have these staffing available, I guess, to go out remotely?
If we need to do it remotely, we'll pick a day um and do a re- and and that shouldn't be a problem.
As far as my district, Sheriff, I can help you with that that particular day. But I just think if we wanna do this in a timely fashion, if we just get this ordinance out, I know what I'm gonna do. I know several key players in the Amish community in my area. I intend on taking them this ordinance, explaining it to them. They all know it's coming. But I wanna give them the opportunity to get it done and get it taken care of versus them trying to find a driver, get him to Spencer, and then you're in danger of people coming in and out all day.
And if you are, and I'll I'm not sure if I include the sheriff before, but I'll send it out to him as well. Any comments that that you guys may have on them, if I can get them that within the next week or so, I can get have it ready for the first of July. And I'm gonna put a piece in there too about how to deal with this year because it doesn't match up, you know, with May um cycle. So um giving them extra time to get get them licensed this this summer. And if there's any other needs of it that you guys like or don't like or or well, you don't like.
No, I read it. I thought it was appropriate. I don't know. I'm not I'm not real knowledge on horse drawn or equipment or anything of that nature, but it made very good sense to me. Uh it sounded like, Greg, you'd know more probably than most of us. Did it make good sense to you? I mean.
It it made good sense to me because the only thing you were asking to be licensed were the um horse drawn vehicles that were used as a daily conveyance. We would use our automobile or our car. It excluded farming practices. Um and.
And the shoes, was that?
And but the the and the shoes.
And the shoe requirement.
Shoes were the most important thing as far as the highway department's concerned, that those have the proper material on them for the proper times of year.
And the the way I've uh labeled it, um I'm assuming that you'd like to enforce all horses, whether it's drawing a wagon or not.
That would be correct.
So that's the way it it's written. So that there's the horse drawn licensing and then separate and.
Well, there are people, the recreational ride on their on our county roads, we've all seen it. So we're not gonna exclude them from, you know, from wearing the right shoes.
And I I don't think you'll see that issue um much with recreational horse riding. This comes from uh having uh that animal out on hard surface all the time and and why you need that. So recreational riders don't tend to do that because they're not generally on the roadways in general, I believe, trail riders. You you more see that in the communities that need it for transportation and conveyance uh back and forth or, you know, um like myself and what I do is, you know, horse drawn wagon rides and that type of thing. So when you have people, you need something that griffs the asphalt but not tears it up. And that's the difference in the materials for the time of year. It's like running a studded stove tire versus something else.
No, I think it's a good thing. It sounds like another area that Dana needs to come out and sit with you, Greg, and make sure we're getting her back taken care of here.
Yeah, cuz i- if the cost of getting the licenses and and stuff is such that we may wanna add in uh more to the fee for licensing to to cover the cost of getting the plates and things like that. So yeah, since we have other things to sit down and talk about.
Well, I will have a a cost um per plate for you by next week.
Awesome.
Anything else? Talk about two forty-six real quick. Sheila just brought that up. Uh we've got a closure between Kelly and Marion. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. What Endot is doing, they're working on two forty-six um from Clay City, replacing roadway pipes to Vandaya. They closed yesterday. Uh we we did not have pre-warning. We just knew that they were going to do construction, but they didn't say where. Uh and they closed Kelly Road or two forty-six between Kelly and Marion. They ended up reopening it for the night and it's closed again this morning. So I don't know how these are gonna go. We've got some really poor um communication. We have reached out. I'm going to go to the actual contractor today and talk with them. They central dispatch wasn't even notified of it yesterday. And that has placed another burden. We had heavy truck traffic out on our county roads again.
Sheriff, is that where some of these tickets are coming from now? Is that accurate?
They're coming from all over.
All over. Yeah, our the county's in a in a bad shape right now with all the construction going on. Yeah. And for those that don't know, we are a very unique county when it comes to Endot. We are divided three different ways by the state. We we operate out of Crawfordsville. We operate out of Seymour and we operate out of Incez. Uh so it is quite the challenge when it comes to dealing with this. Uh as Greg knows, I spent many, many minutes, many hours dealing with the governor's office uh Endot offices. And and we did get into the table and had had a a meeting. Uh that's where we were talking about some of these funds. But it it creates headaches for the highway department uh very much so when you got three different Endot districts.
I I will say since the meeting, um credit needs to be given or due when we speak Endot. Seymour District stepped up. We're getting notifications. We have information from them. Uh so it's beginning to work.
And we hope so. And if not, I'll be more than happy to make more calls. Uh they they gotta communicate with us.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Selecting officials and department heads, Kathleen.
So last month I took to council um questioning or asking for the county to put in place a parental leave policy. Um I did ask several area agencies if they had anything. I did get uh three examples back. Um I got a response back from the town of Plainfield, from Monroe County, and also from the state. Each of them provide a little bit different amount of time for anybody on parental leave. Um but I guess I am now bringing it to you guys because it'll need to be uh distracted by the attorney. Um there's not been any, we're just starting the conversation because I feel we need something in place for our parents to be to be able to take some time uh to be at home with their children, which they should have uh without completely exhausting all of the time that they're given from the county. Uh because my certain situation is I have an employee that would, uh she's due in August and would not have enough time to even be off the six weeks that you're typically off for maternity leave. Um and then with my department, the way it works, I fear her not coming back because of compensation for how many ever weeks she wouldn't have had accrued time to be able to take that time off. So it's just something that I know is going to affect county budget, those kind of things. But I also know that you guys um that handle the handbook and everything. So I just, we need to get the ball rolling because we need to provide something for employees, I feel.
I agree with that. I'm shocked that we've been able to get us long this far without some type of maternity leave or parental policy. And and I think that Dana's aware of that and has been looking into that.
Yeah, if you can give me those examples, that'd be great.
Okay.
Then what I'll probably do is send out to you guys some questions because there is a wide range of things that I'm finding that can be covered by it. And so um I need to know from you guys what your thoughts are on on which ones are priority and which ones you want put in place and those that you don't. So.
I don't know if you gentlemen support it or not, but I think.
I I I do, but I know. I do, but I know like large corporations, you know, are giving twelve weeks, you know, some are giving off to six weeks, you know. It's all over the place.
Yeah.
We need to come to a really good common base that this county can can work with, appease their employees, but as well as not wreck the economy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Doing it. So I I believe in it strongly, but we're gonna really have to pay a close attention to how we do this. And uh but absolutely would love to look at some of the proposals. I think we just build off what you found and come up with something logical.
I know like the state, they do it by hours. It's not by specific weeks. So I think theirs per hour is if it's, I can't remember if I did it by eight hours or by twelve hours specific for my department. It ended up being like two and a half weeks. Um there's also some that they put restrictions on it that it this can only be used up to three times. So, you know, you you're not gonna use it eight, ten, twelve times. Um so just kinda those things are are in place and for, you know, adoption and.
Well, I think it'll be great for employee retention, uh number one.
Well, because they know that they'll have their job whenever they come, which heavenly protects them with that as well.
And I think we've lost some of the fast because we didn't have.
Yes, yes.
That's that's kinda old hat. We should probably step up a little bit, uh more towards the future there. And
Yeah.
So yeah, I would definitely uh would definitely look at that.
And it also allows time for the father figures, maybe not just mom, to be home, those kind of things. So um cause it's just important for them to be home when they're very hungry babies. So.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Yep.
Right.
So I know um it's been mentioned before, not by me, because I'm have not yet discussed any of this, but the issue with their jails. Uh I know you and I are going to uh visit facility on the eleventh of July. I just wanted to be known how bad our jail is. Uh it's a hot mess. It it is. There's something always breaking, going wrong with fixing. We're dumping more money into a facility that um we need a new one. Um I don't wanna spend the money and but we are taxing our people for it. And it's something we need to look at. It's a it's a mess. Um and we have problems segregating people. We get problems inmates that come in. We can't separate them. Um and that just causes safety issues for my guys as well as other inmates. Uh so that's a problem that that I know that we're working towards and we're looking at. We just we just need to be remember that, not put it on the back burner, not forget about it. What we need, we need to do something. And I know this is more of a council issue than it is uh your issue. Um personnel. We cover seven hundred miles of roadway and um that's a daunting task. I typically have two people working per shift to cover seven hundred miles of road, not to mention the highway roads as well. We have about twenty-two thousand people that we have to serve with two people per shift. I have one leaving. I have one that resigned. It will be done on the twenty-fourth. I have probably two more that are gonna leave, one for retirement, one that just thinks that law enforcement may not be for them. My schedule is already strapped. As of the twenty-fifth, um I have about eight sk- eight shifts that I'll have one person working uh through August because I have somebody in the academy. Now, those three people, if they leave, I've already got eight shifts where I'm in trouble.
How's the applications? Are you getting any at all? How's applications? Are you getting any at all?
You know, that's the thing with applications. We don't get a lot. We don't get what we need. Especially, I'm picking. I'm not going to just pick somebody because they're certified. In fact, I passed on someone who was certified, which would make our life a lot easier when it comes to scheduling. But I want the right people. I don't want to just plug a hole and have a warm body with a heartbeat. I need the right people who are going to hear for the right reasons. Not just because they have a certification. That doesn't mean they're right. So I don't know what the answer is, but I can't have one person working the road. I can't. That's, that's a safety issue. Indiana State Police have twenty-two people to work three shifts in six counties. They can't help. They can't. Monroe County is going to be the priority for ISP. I get that. But we need help. We need people. I need more officers than what I'm allotted. And I know that doesn't have to do with this, this particular job description of yours. But we got to serve our people better than one person on shift. Once, once, why I lose these people, that's what we're looking at. One person to cover an entire county by themselves. That can't happen. We can't work twenty-four hours. I can't put them working twelve-hour shifts nonstop without days off. Accidents will happen. Litigation will happen. We need help. We need help. That's not the answer.
Well, we support you and hopefully we can come to some kind of resolution. The jail is, is something that we're right on the edge of. This board has approved the feasibility study. That money has been spent. We have been through that process. When you came on board, you brought to us or to me a different element of building a jail with a different engineering company. And that's what we're going to look at. There is no punishment or fines. We lose no money that we've already spent. If we change, and I've had Dana look into that. So if we change from our QAW to Avatus, I think it is, or something to that, as you're wanting to do more administrative to your part of the jail, it's not going to affect us to make that change. So we are right on the cusp. And you're right, we are collecting those funds. I know from the commissioner's standpoint, we have collected heat from the community about we're being taxed and nothing's going on. So we're going to have to move forward. From what I can tell, Ryan, and I met with you earlier, the year-over-year issue with the jail, we've probably spent over two hundred thousand dollars in maintenance out of that jail lit fund so far this year. Probably a little more than that. So the money that we're collecting to go towards a jail, we're spending it faster than we're bringing it in. So the only way to fix that problem is move forwards, towards the jail. So that's going to be a discussion. You're right, the eleventh, we go up to Fulton County, I believe it is. And at that point, then we can get back and make a decision of some kind. So sympathize for that.
Thank you.
Any other elected official or department head? Joe, I think you have some comments this morning.
Yes, I, we're not going to talk about this social media resolution here.
Yeah, I was going to wait until we, well, I guess you're right. I'm sorry. I skipped to, skipped the auditor. We'll get you in there, Jen. Yeah, public comments underneath that. I apologize. I missed it. Go ahead. Go right ahead.
All right.
Go your own hole.
So you have Mark, Fish Creek Road, three comments. First comment is I want to express appreciation to whoever is working on the website. It's getting better, okay? Agendas, right? Calendar film, right? It's good stuff, so. Every step forward.
That would be Susan Zimmerman. She's helping me out tremendously on doing that, so we're going to give her the credit for that.
Okay, great. So thank you.
And, you know, Sheila and I try to give as much information to her. She, and Sheila does what she can. Again, her hands are tied with all that she's got going on.
I'm, you know, if you're an electrician, you have to be, you have to be an electrician, right? If you've spent your entire life doing it, if you did this, so I might have a couple of suggestions to make it easier. I might talk with Suzanne.
Sure.
All right, that's first item. Second item, first of all, this is breaking news, okay? As I was driving up here, there was a, two trucks, two lowboys on Fish Creek Road stopped at the Lennox Road intersection. The one had a, I can describe it as a huge feller banger on it. And the other one had a big skater on it. I don't, I can't imagine that they tried to turn left because I don't think they would have made it. I don't think they would have turned that way. So I'll check on my own. They probably had to go up to the tail bell and back down. But it's another reason to do this work with respect to in bonding organs where something that makes the county aware of what to do. And in the meantime, should I have called nine-one-one? I don't think it's an emergency, but it's, it's a situation where, you know, I mean, these guys are, they're trying to do the job, but if they tried to turn left on that bridge, I think they would have taken out that car.
I'd probably call the highway department.
I think you could call, if you call us and then we'll, we'll get out there. We'll, we'll pass it on to sheriff's office too, and we could probably get out there quicker and see what's going on.
Hopefully they're not north of that. Anyway, so good. So that's the second item. And appreciate that. And it's another reinforcement of the fact that we do use our county roads for lots of things, not just passenger traffic. The third item relates to getting more open and everything with respect to how we're proceeding with respect to our county highway work. Because it is a, it is a thing that people are very concerned about in the county, right? And when you see, you know, point to Port Green County, Green County says through May, for non-personnel items, they spend two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And it's right on their actual website. It's right on the website. And that reinforces it, helps people, okay, this is what they're, that's what they're doing. So I would encourage the county to, it's, it's not, it's a little criticism, but it's not intended to be deep criticism. I encourage the county to be as open as possible with respect to these funding decisions, okay, funding user funds, okay? That's it.
Mark, most of anything that goes on at the highway is done right here in this meeting, so it's public knowledge. Everything to deal with the highway, whether it be dust control, the projects that they're working on. They bring everything here. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm not worried about, sorry. It is all here. What's not clear, I guess unless you go into MOW, is how much money the department has spent. Here they, Green County, for example, they expect two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. None in five, that's sorry, four million in five. So they have fifty percent more than we do.
Yeah.
So, but, but see how that goes. Okay, so they spent that. So that's, it's, it's not so much the, the what you're doing, it's the what it costs. Clearly, guys talk about it. And I don't want you to go through either my item because we never get done. But maybe there's some way to expose that and way to.
Well, we actually work with Green County a lot, my administrative assistants, and theirs are very good colleagues and communicate back and forth. I haven't particularly seen what Jeff's talking about, but I'll have those two reach out and we'll see what they're doing. We have that information anyway. It's no secret.
Right.
No, it's not a secret.
It's no secret. So I mean, we have the information. We just need to figure out how to refine it. And if we can, I don't see a problem.
Thing of it is, they wouldn't necessarily know. Sheila said we could just post the claims for eleven seventy-six and seventy-three, but that doesn't necessarily go to all roads. That's maintenance repair for vehicles. And so that may not be, I mean, good suggestion, but I think you're more talking about what's going to the roads. Yeah. Okay.
So, so again.
Give me, I'll report back in the next meeting what we find out. And maybe it's something we could implement in regard to policy and what we put out. If it's something that's doable and it sounds to me like it is, I'll just have to bring it before you guys for both that tells me I can put it out there.
Okay. Something else on your plate?
Yeah, but I don't think it could be an issue. We'll just reach out and see what it is.
Sheila? Nothing? All right. The attorney's got a couple of policies, or at least one policy, maybe an ordinance or two.
Right. What I have first is an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh six. And it's to correct the scribbler's error. In that, what, what that is about is establishing an infrastructure zone and how long that would be available to utilities to install and be able to not have to pay personal property tax. This was done to encourage the expansion of broadband services or natural gas or water. The way the ordinance reads is that you can, the, it says that the exemption shall only be available to broadband, natural gas, and water infrastructure projects that are completed within. And it has the written word three and in parentheses it has six. S C I R E M C had pointed out that they, when this first came out, that they had talked and commissioners were wanting to do six years. And the reason why is because the three years actually came from language from Brown County where they were ready to get installed. And in Owen County, they weren't to that point yet. And so they wanted, they were asking for six years. And generally in construction, things that are written out, like the three, override what is in numericals. However, after getting this out there to you guys, it was, I felt that the, it should be six years. Because again, that's encouraging the, the expansion of these services to, to the residents. So the scribbler's error is simply to change the word three to the, written word three to the written word six.
And you know, with some of the discussion with this, R E M C's been pretty, pretty good at the counting over the years. They, they give us a million-dollar interest-free loan that we're paying back through our redevelopment, goes back some time. I have spoke with the C E O as well as the fiber contact. We are working with them diligently to get reduced rate throughout the county fiber. I've talked to Sheila about this, trying to help her office if we can consolidate with one company. I think right now we've got Comcast, we have Smithville, we have R E M C Fiber. So all these bills are coming in and maybe I've missed one. I don't know. But trying to ease some burden in that department as well to have one consolidated internet bill. And they're willing to work with us on that. So, and they've done that so far. The highway, we've got it reduced a little bit from the original and I'm working on some more. So I think it's important that we go ahead with what's possible.
So it is an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh six to correct the scribbler's error. Whereas ordinance number twenty eighteen dash oh six, an ordinance to establish designation of an infrastructure development zone was passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County on the twenty-first day of May twenty eighteen. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County has identified a scribbler's error in paragraph one, or section one, paragraph six of this, of said ordinance, which erroneously reads the, in quotes, the word three, and then in parentheses, the number six. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has determined that the correct reading is, quote, six, written out with six in numerical. Now therefore being ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County the following. The scribbler's error of, in quotes, three, written out in six in numerical, in parentheses, in ordinance twenty eighteen dash oh six, section one, paragraph six, shall be amended to read, in quote, six, with written out and in parentheses, passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting held on the twenty-first day of June twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Dana. And that is ordinance oh seven. Is that correct, Sheila? You know, so you know from what I've been told, and I haven't checked with Sheila or the treasurer's office. They went ahead and paid these taxes, but then turned around and filed an appeal. So this will stop that appeals process. I've talked to Dusty about this as well. Sheila, might correct. You know that has happened. Okay. So with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-three zero seven?
I'm right there. I'm right there, motion.
I have a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, I have for you a, there's a personnel policy and then also.
Resolution.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, so the first is a resolution that would establish social, social media user policy. And what this is, is that there are several departments of Owen County that use social media to reach out to people, to keep them informed of what's going on and such. Well, Owen County doesn't have a policy on controlling what the public puts on to that social media page. So this would be a policy that would lay out exactly what the social media user, you know, can and can't do on the county's webpages. And it gives the administrators of those, the ability to block or, or take off certain posts. Now, I'm not sure if I've done this in the past, but you, you want the entire policy right into the record? Or is this summation of it?
I think if you just sum it up, given.
Yeah, if you do the summary on it, because I know it's fairly lengthy.
Okay. So the, at the beginning, it's the Owen County's social media accounts are monitored by staff in order to promote activities, events, and information of Owen County government and its departments. Owen County's goal is to share information with the residents of Owen County and nearby communities in a timely fashion. Owen County has an overriding interest and expectation in protecting the integrity of the information posted on the social media sites and the content of, that is attributed to Owen County and its officials. Owen County profiles and pages may contain links to other websites on the internet. This does not in any way directly or indirectly constitute endorsement by Owen County. Owen County welcomes engagement by the public on social media at any time. However, given the need to manage county resources, content, moderation, and responses should only be expected during regular Owen County business hours. When engaging with Owen County through social media, you agree to the following social media user policy again. So if anybody posts, they are agreeing to this policy, which would be added to the page. Comments and content posted to Owen County maintained. Social media sites are reviewed by staff while content and comments will not be edited. Owen County reserves the right to remove user-generated content or comments where appropriate. So if there are comments, for instance, that are profane or defamatory, there's the direction to, when you're interacting with other users, users to be civil. It bans profanity, obscenity, vulgarity, and so on. There is, will allow for the attacks of individual people. Those would be removed. Comments that are used to try to sell the product. Comments that are used to try to sell the product, that's not our point. So in any leaks, links that are posted or pages, they can be deleted. Anything that could compromise the safety of a public official employee or member of the general public, subject to deletion. Anything that would interfere or compromise current investigations, law enforcement and such. Any disclosure of information that is confidential by law or sorry, regulation will be deleted. Off topic materials, those with repeated violations of this policy may cause the user to be blocked from the social media profiles and pages. Owen County reserves the right to remove material containing computer viruses or otherwise may disrupt damage or restrict the use of any computer software. Owen County understands that social media is twenty four seven medium, however, staff monitoring capabilities are not. Every comment or material that is inconsistent with this policy may not be seen right away. And Owen County trusts in the maturity and civility of the community to ignore personal attacks and negative speech and or to respond politely. If a user discovers any comments or posts that seem to violate the terms of this social media policy, they're advised to send the site manager a private message. Owen County's social media accounts are hosted by web services that are not owned by Owen County and have different privacy and security policies. Neither Owen County nor a department thereof are responsible for and do not endorse or guarantee content availability viewpoints, products or services that are offered or expressed on non Owen County websites. By posting or commenting, the user agrees to the terms of the social media policy. So the resolution is a resolution establishing a social media user policy. Whereas Indiana Code thirty six dash two dash two dash two establishes the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen as the county executive. Whereas in interest of economic development and customer service, the board has determined that Owen County should make use of social media in order to promote activities, events and information of the Owen County government and its departments. And whereas Owen County has an overriding interest and expectation in protecting the integrity of the information posted on its social media sites and the content that is attributed to Owen County and its officials. So now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen. The following, section one, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen hereby adopts and approves the social media user policy. Attaches exhibit A, which is what I just went through. In section two, this resolution shall be in effect, in effect immediately upon its adoption. Passed and resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Owen, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting held on the twenty first day of June twenty twenty three.
Thank you Dana. And folks, this was not just put together by Owen County. This is a collaboration of several counties throughout the state that has checked into their social media policy. And Jeff, as you mentioned, as we try to get more and more information out there to the public, this protects everyone involved. So with that being said, I need that back. It's the only copy I had. What is the resolution number Sheila?
Seven.
Seven, again on this resolution, okay. Been a slow year, hasn't it?
The last one was seven.
That was on the ordinance. This is a resolution.
I got you, never mind.
Three in favor?
Yeah. So with that being said and read, do I hear a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three zero seven? A resolution establishing a social media user policy for Owen County.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty three zero seven, resolution to establish social media user policy.
Have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Now we have a personnel policy. And again, this was a collaboration of other counties as well. Dana, putting this together, very important policy.
Yes. And as this is, the social media policy was a policy that the county has for people interacting with the county. This is a personnel policy, so it does not require a resolution, but it does require to be included in the minutes of, of the meeting. And this policy, and my collection of policies are not totally complete. I believe this would be five twenty nine. And this is a technology security policy that will become effective today. And this is kind of lengthy, but just to make sure people know. The first section is ownership and disclosure. Owen County cell phones, computers, internet connections and the electronic mail system are county assets and are subject to review or monitoring at any time without notice. Employees should have no expectation of privacy regarding these items. Further, all passwords belong to Owen County. Employees should be aware that information contained on county's cell phones or computers, including their email messages, subject to public disclosure. All email messages are Owen County records. The contents of an email account may be disclosed without an employee's permission. And Owen County reserves the right to access and disclose as necessary all messages sent over its email system without regard to content. The decision to grant or deny access to the email records is solely the decision of the commissioners. And I'll say there that I've always recommended that, don't put in an email something that you don't want on the cover page of the paper. So employees waive any right to privacy and any content on any county device or email. Employees are cautioned not to communicate any materials or language that they would not otherwise communicate publicly. It is specifically prohibited to use an email account that is not provided by the county for Owen County business. All Owen County proprietary information shall remain within the control of Owen County at all times. Employees shall not conduct county business that results in the storage of proprietary information on personal or non-county controlled environments, including devices maintained by a third party within Owen County does not have a contractual agreement. So things like cloud, we have a contractual agreement for things like that. Section two, sharing of information and unauthorized access. Each employee will be granted certain access permissions and resources that are required to perform their specific job duties. These permissions and resources are the property of Owen County and for use by the assigned employee only. At no time shall any permissions or resources that have been granted to the employee be made available to or shared with any individual regardless of intent, job position or circumstances. This includes, but is not limited to, email, internet access, network access, county data, electronic devices and V P N access. Individual users will be held accountable for their account's use by other people. Although each employee has an individual password to access county systems, it belongs to Owen County. Due to the sensitivity of email and separation of job duties, in order for an employee to access another employee's email, they must first seek approval from the county commissioners. An employee must not attempt to obtain a password for another employee's computer account. If an employee suspects someone knows their password, the employee should change their password and contact their supervisor, a commissioner and or technical services. Employees are prohibited from modifying another per employee's email and shall not attempt to forge email messages. An employee may not disguise their identity or the origin of any transmission over any of the county's communication systems. Employees may not attempt to gain access to another employee's files or email messages. County employees may not use unsecured portals such as Gmail or Yahoo accounts without permission of the county commissioners. Three precautions. Employees are cautioned to ensure that they log off when leaving a computer and will be held accountable for any unauthorized person's access to county systems. If an employee received non-departmental external email with an attachment, the employee shall not touch the attachment, not open it, not view it, not save it regardless of who sent the email. Any viruses attached to address books and can give the appearance of being sent to you by legitimate contracts. The employee shall contact the person who sent the email to verify they actually sent it and request that what is specifically contained in the email. If an employee is at all unsure about whether or not to open an email, the employee shall contact their supervisor or technical services. For violations, if an employee violates any of the provisions contained in this policy, their access to county resources may be denied and disciplinary action may be taken up to and including termination.
Thank you Dana. And Ryan, touch base, go ahead.
Yes. I would ask that our cell phones are an exemption to that. Our cell phones are used as evidentiary for crimes? And we can't have anybody else have access to that? It may be pictures.
We can make an amendment to the sheriff's department phones in this policy. And what I started to say before you came sheriff, we had a email problem down at the sheriff's department that contaminated the whole computer system down there because emails were opened up that shouldn't have been, that kind of thing. I have no problem with that. Makes perfect sense.
To having a, some training members, there are training programs out there to discuss internet safety, email safety and those things. If we could get those established and that go countywide of all employees, that would be wonderful. We did that with the state. Literally every month we had to watch a module online. They covered all of that type of stuff so that we educate our people what not to open and what to open. Because it changes constantly.
Absolutely. And this protects every employee of the county. You don't want to leave your computer open to where somebody else can come and incriminate you in an email or, or get into your system, whatever it may be, the financial sides of things, whatever. So I have no problem making an amendment to the sheriff's department's cell phones.
Thank you.
And with that being said, gentlemen, let's go ahead and make a motion on this policy. I'm sorry?
So there are employees and elected officials using personal emails. I think that we shouldn't be. I think that everybody should be assigned. And when they're done, it's part of the, everything is froze or, or the step by step process that you do. Same thing with the county cell phones. I'm still working on a cell phone bill because we have phones that haven't been used or phones that were given to the outgoing employees and, and elected officials. And, and so that crossover, I think, can cause problems potentially if some, you know, if, if it's not turned off. If we don't know, I think the department head should have to inform us immediately that someone is leaving or has left.
And Sheila, I think that that's your problem. I've been, this is a part of that, but we've had several conversations. As people leave departments, those phones aren't getting turned back in or the department heads not calling and saying, we need to take this person off the bill. So now she's going through a bill that's fifty, sixty pages thick or whatever it is. Looks like a small catalog. So we do need help from department heads as you have people come and go that are using county cell phones. I would say those people that, that don't need to, actually need a phone for county business, don't give them one.
Or don't want to take the number.
Also, I'd also stress that if anybody's in here on company time, using company equipment, their personal emails should not be anywhere near it.
Absolutely. And that's what this thing.
Not their personal phones, not their personal emails. That causes nothing but problems.
And according to the access attorney for the state of Indiana, and you can figure it out, but it's, it's the law. If you are in one of these meetings and you are texting or you are emailing, that now becomes public record. Your phone, your tablet, whatever you're using in this meeting can be taken and presented as public information. I, I don't make this stuff up, but stay law.
Okay. Well, I think a couple amendments to that Gary and Dana, I think as big corporate. What do you, I, I, do you want to bring in?
I, I'd just like to go ahead and add it to our policy.
But let's, let's make sure next meeting, we have an amendment to the sheriff's department.
And in the same regard, our email, you know, those, we email reports to the prosecutor's officer. Some of those would contain extremely graphic pictures of crime scenes. Those are things that people don't need to see. Trust me, you don't want to see most of it. But I think that needs to be added. That should not be public record. It can't be public record.
Well, nobody has access to that if we question other than the commissioners because we're under the policy. We established these policies, so it wouldn't be exposed to the public. And if there's a question of the integrity of one of your officers and you and I have a conversation and you say, hey Gary, I think we need to take a look at that. That's kind of where that's going, if that makes any sense.
And with no disrespect, if, God forbid, I'll project that to occur. But if it was to occur where you are the subject of a case, that can't be really, I, I don't feel that it can be released to anyone. It's evidentiary, that is what we would use to discuss things with the prosecutor on how to proceed with a case. We do use county email for that, obviously.
Okay. On this, on this amendment Dana, would you have an issue with talking with Sheriff White?
I've, I've got a proposed sentence that at the very beginning, that we could go ahead and approve today and I could just.
We just don't want to muddy up the water.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll support that. I totally understand.
Yeah, right. And, and it's, you know.
But I want to take.
Working to type the case like that, but if it was presented to us and we had to act in some form and forward that information, whether it be to I S P, whether it be to prosecutor's office, whomever it is, there needs to be, it needs to be confidential.
Law enforcement is a little different. Yeah. And, and I agree with that. I think Joel does and Bob does. But I would like to go ahead and pass on this policy today if we could.
The sentence I, I recommend is that this policy applies to the Owen County Sheriff's Office as the sheriff shall determine. That will allow him to say what does apply and what doesn't. Because you may have administrative things that, you know, that this policy would, would apply to, and you can do that. So it just gives you the authority to determine what of this policy applies to your people.
That cover, that way if you do have an employee that's got on somebody else's email account and incriminated them some way, we, we've got something to stand on.
Sure.
Okay. So with all that being said, I'd like to hear a motion to approve into county policy five twenty nine technology security policy. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve five twenty nine technology security policy effective in Jan twenty one, two thousand twenty three.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And Sheila, you can send that out. Mass email. I don't know if we have one here assigned, but we don't really need to.
I don't have a copy of it.
Now you didn't. I, I'll read this end of, everybody's one with the, that sentence I read. Anything else Dana?
No, there had, are a number of ordinances and policies that I've been working on. So we'll probably be seeing more and more of those over the next several.
And we'll probably get to that here in just a minute on some of that list.
I wanted to ask Greg, do you have an update on something that just happened, if you care, Sheriff?
Yeah, I do. What Jeff reported on earlier today, we've got damages and stolen semi is out on Fish Creek Road. I've got people en route there now, but it's damages that I need to look at myself personally.
I have guys in route as well.
Give us about five minutes here at the beginning.
Give them green tickets.
Wait, so you gentlemen know, we've already talked to Ryan on the phone, he's in there real quick. I think we're going to Commissioner comments. We, we're trying to get our ordinance and our ticket situation lined out. We've asked Dana to get involved in that summons. We're putting one out. We've, we've got five hundred dollar violations out here with these semis. But according to the ticket or the ordinance, I'm not really sure what that little.
Fine sheet.
Fine sheet, seventy five dollars is what. So we're losing four hundred and twenty five dollars on these tickets. So we're going to adjust that fine sheet.
Five dollars doesn't fix a bridge. It replaces Sheriff White's stomach.
Yeah. So we've had that conversation and, and Dana's going to fix that for the sheriff's department. Sheila brought it to attention yesterday or the day before, we talked about it. So many things that go on, it's, it's hard to keep up with it sometimes, but we are going to get that resolved. The sheriff's department's working hard to help us. The highway's doing their job and we don't want to lose these funds. It's important. All right, Joel, go ahead.
A couple of things. I wanted to pass along that the, I have been in contact with Elite Electric this week. We are proceeding with getting the generator wired and installed in the court. It's, it's currently here. I'm working with John Livingston, Elite Electric. We will be, I will be working in hand with him. He scheduled all the circuits in this building. We, hopefully, we can wrap this up by fall. The building will be covered in an emergency situation. Keep in mind, it's not a whole system, but it's going to be enough to keep the business running within the courthouse and the power outage. So that, that's in the works. I did want to give the highway department kudos for all they've been going through and the work they're currently doing and trying to keep people appeased. I'm getting a lot of calls, people wanting this, wanting that, and it's probably driving Greg as nuts as it is maybe, and as are my fellow commissioners, I'm sure. So I want to give kudos out to them for doing their job. Also, as well as, I want to let those know that I'm going to be working with the coroner directly to, to revamp her. I'm going to be meeting with the county council personally or hopefully. I want to work with them and see if we can't resolve and come up with a better situation for the coroner as far as wages. They're below substandard. I don't, I don't know what other counties are paying. I think our coroner does a great job, and it's a valuable job within this community. So I just wanted to let people know that I will be working with the coroner in percent of some budget, budgetary numbers. And lastly, I had a conversation with Gary Burton and Bob Swayley. I wanted a memo, a county memorandum from county council regarding his responsibilities and all of this nature. I, I hold this paperwork. This is public knowledge. Everybody's welcome to have a copy of that. We have a copy of Ryan over there. I do want to read one thing. I see three six dash two dash two dash thirty, employment of attorney to represent and advise executive. Executive is these three commissioners sitting here. The executive may employ and fix compensation of an attorney and represent, advise the council. For post-section nine, article two, the Constitution of the United States, the state of Indiana, employed by a county executive as an attorney does not constitute a lucrative office. The county commissioners have contracted Dan Kerr to provide legal services to them through them. The fiscal body may employ and fix compensation for an attorney to represent and advise the fiscal body. It's right here. I'm going to leave this. Anybody that disputes how it is we're conducting business with our county attorneys, welcome to look at that paperwork. And they can take it up with people at the state. That's it. It's black and white. It's law. It's undisputable. What happened in the past with the county attorney isn't happening anymore.
And with that being said, Joel, it was discussed in the council meeting the other night to try to work with the council. I think that it was proven in that meeting that can't be done. So I want to go ahead and all of us put together an agreement here that we consent, continue business as the contract reads. But it stays with the commissioners. If the council wants to hire outside litigation, they're more than welcome to. The state laws are the state laws.
I never understood for the life of me how an attorney can work for both clients.
Can I say something?
You may. I would love to.
I would love for us to have our own attorney. I am way on board for that.
Well, I, I, again, I, I mean, when I, for instance, and heaven forbid I bring this up, you know, but as, as an example, me and my ex-wife didn't hire the same attorney. It doesn't work. It cannot work. There's too many different interests on both parties. Not to say that I'm mad at the county council or can't work with them. That's not even the point. But if you need representation, using our representation doesn't work, or us using your representation. A client, a lawyer can't work with both parties. It, it doesn't work, and it never works. And in the past, it's proven that it doesn't work too terribly good. So, you know, the, the truth of the matter is, he's, you know, he was taking a beating over this for being the executive attorney, and that's what he is, folks. We can allow Mr. Kerr to work with sheriff department, or we can allow him to work with the auditor, and we can do that. But when, you know, our last attorney, heaven forbid, got strung out, or he didn't, you know, didn't know what was right or wrong. I, I think it's an appropriate move. You can't have a fiscal body and an executive body with the same lawyer. It doesn't work. It can't work. Having said that, again, that's the, that's the memo that was written. It, it has the Indiana codes. I don't know what else to say about it. It's not worth arguing about. It's written in black and white.
Oh, you'll get no argument from me.
And, and I have, and Polly, me and you have never had an issue trying to work on things together, but I don't see how one lawyer can represent two people and do it effectively.
I think part of the confusion is, it's always been that a way. I mean, if you go back, and it's never been put in front of them in code. I think they're willing to accept that.
Okay. I, I agree with that, Sheila. But see, that's the problem with Owen County. They want to do things today like they did twenty years ago.
And I think.
And because they were doing it twenty.
And it needs to move forward and change to the correct way, but it's never been presented that a way.
And it, it isn't a personal vendetta against, I would love to work with county council. It's not a personal vendetta against you, Polly, or any of your people, but we cannot continue to do this. We got to, you, you know, if you need legal counsel, I advise you find legal counsel. I mean.
Oh, I, like I said, I, I have been on board from day one because we have our own legal counsel. I just do not want to tax the taxpayers more than they already have, so we have to figure out how to do that within budget.
Well, you know, and it was also brought up, and I'm not going to quote exact numbers because I don't have them in front of me. You know, everybody thought that, ooh, we're paying this exorbitant amount for, for a lawyer. Well, you know, you can add his hours of, you know, there was comments, well, Attorney Kerr only works four hours a month or two, three. Folks, he can fill sheets of paper up with what he does daily and with every department he works with. It's fact. He is a busy, busy man. So it's, it's, in my mind, the discussion should end. You do the hourly rate and things of that nature. I can assure you, he's the cheapest mouthpiece going right now. You're not going to find an attorney for any less money.
He pays his own, he pays his own taxes. He pays his own insurance, all that amount and stuff. And I know last night, we had planning commission. He was at it last night for the whole duration. So, and like I said, he's, he's a lot, lot more meetings and a lot more stuff than the public ever knows about and stuff. And like I said before, all that money he pays, he pays his own taxes, pays his own vacation time, and he pays his own insurance. So like I said, that's not all just going in his pocket. He's having to spend out some of it for himself. I'm done.
Real quick.
Okay. Sounds like an interesting idea because I, I do think it resulted in the idea that previous attorney, that he was going to be more of a consultant to the entire county regardless of the situation. Although even he said, I'd work for the commissioners. He said that, not for everybody. So he did say that. My own comment is, sounds great. We're all going to be paying more money because we're going to have to spend more money for attorneys. We are getting attorneys compared to land expensively at this point. We're going to get back to the point where we're paying two twenty-five, two fifty, two seventy-five a year, just like we were before we started. So just, I think we need to be realistic about this because that's what's going to happen.
There's additional funds in the commissioners' funds for legal fees, so some of that could be moved over. So that point being made. Any other comments, Bob?
I have none.
Okay. I got a couple. I'd like to dispute Councilman Wood's comments about me lying to him the other day in a public meeting on whether Mr. Milton resigned last year. He, he resigned no more than Sheila Reeves resigned last year. They're both still sitting here today in this meeting. In order to pay a resignation, it comes in a written form. I've got two witnesses here. Did either one of you gentlemen receive a written resignation from Mr. Milton last year in October?
No.
No.
Facts.
Not via email.
That's truth.
Not via email, not via written letter, not even.
Now, you can, you can take that in a phone call conversation in the heat of a moment with a dispute with another elected official. We've all been there. I quit. I'm done. I've had it. It means nothing. But if I'm going to get called a liar in a public meeting, you better bring proof. And I just did. In partnership. Also, it was said that this board had put out on social media that we were after the EMA director. That is a false statement. I do not have a social media account. Joel does not do social media. Bob put nothing on there. So that was created by our social media warriors, troublemakers, whatever you want to say. I want to make that clear. Last statement. We have a contract here for GRW Engineering to take care of our zoning ordinances that we've been fighting for many, many months and years. So I would like to make a motion, or hear a motion to approve the signature on this agreement. It is to be split by the redevelopment committee and the county council. And that's already been approved on both avenues. So with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Joel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys will hang up. We sign all these documents. Other than that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending.
So Greg, what do we know? They're stuck on the bridge again?
I don't have the exact facts.
Is that why you're just sitting there taking it in right now? Are you waiting?
One went, one, hell, crap.
Let it run.
I'm not steering. It's already coming. I'd like to give Bob, the planning commission, I think. Susan.
It seems like you're.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it's, it's crucial that you and John are on.
I think. Okay. We've got to see.
I've got to get this.
Of course, I need to. Yes, you do.